Okay, welcome everyone. It's time for our call to order for our 11:30 a.m. commission Today, our invocation will be given by Commissioner Perry and the pledge of allegiance will be given by our human resources manager, Janice Sander.
Our dear Father, we come aboard this time grateful for blessings that has blessed us with. We ask you to guide and direct us in thy service and please put blessing, protect, and watch over those who are serving us every day, in the military and first responders. Please protect them and let them know we appreciate the service and protects them they provide each of us. We ask the blessing upon those who are in special need at this time and they'll have expert to guide them and help them in their time of need. And we pray that thou will continue to guide and direct us and administer the deeds of Boxheller County in the way that thou sayest fit. And we ask for these favors and blessings to say so in the name of Christ's command.
Amen.
May I stand and repeat the pledge of allegiance would be?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, thank you Commissioner Perry and thank you HR Manager Janice Sander. Now we are to minutes, approval minutes for July 9, 2025.
I approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to approve the minutes from July 9, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Administrative review, reports, future agenda items. Commissioners, anything?
I have nothing.
Not right now.
Steve, you have anything that would fit underneath that agenda?
Don't think so.
Okay, Marla, you're okay?
Yes.
Okay. Former agenda items? None. Emergency management issues? Harpa, LATCF? Cool, we're just flying through this meeting. Okay, item number seven, Boxheller County Employee Recognition. Commissioner Perry?
Okay. Our employee of the month this month is not with us today because she's on vacation, which is, she duly deserves to be on vacation for what she does. But we want to recognize, and we're going to go as a commission, we'll go out when she's back from vacation, present this to her. Our employee of the month for this month is Amy Adams. Works at our fairgrounds. For those who don't know Amy, she works tirelessly, along with Jan and others out there, to keep that fairgrounds up and operating. And for people who don't understand, Amy does anything and everything that's asked of her out there, from cleaning toilets and plunging toilets, to taking care of horse stalls, to making sure things are fixed and repaired and ready for the fair, and all other activities that occur out there. And Amy's one of these employees that doesn't necessarily say, hey, I'm a nine-to-five employee. She is one of those employees that goes out and works all kinds of different hours. Shows up early in the morning sometimes to make sure that things are clean and ready to go for whatever activities happen that day, and stays late at night to make sure that whatever activity needs to happen later that night is able to happen. We just truly appreciate all Amy does to keep our fairgrounds, along with Jan and others out there, to keep it running and functioning correctly. And we just feel like that prior to going into our county fair, that is very duly important for us as a county, to recognize Amy for all the efforts that she's put in as a county employee. And so therefore, for this month of July, Amy Adams will be the Boxheller County Employee of the Month.
Okay, thank you. And we will go out and give that to her, and hopefully we'll be able to embarrass her a little bit while we do it. So, okay, we are now on to item number eight, public hearings. We have three public hearings for three different agricultural protection areas. Possibly before we talk a little bit about these public hearings in agricultural protection area, I'm going to turn a little bit of time over to Commissioner Perry.
Just so everyone understands, with ag protection areas, we've had a public meeting, or had a meeting as a commission with a bunch of folks from the county out at the fairgrounds about this. And we understand the Constitution of the state, and the Constitution of the United States protects lands and liberty. What this agricultural protection area is something the legislature allows and puts in place for people who want to put an ag protection area on their property. And really what it does, if they choose to go down this road, it's a personal choice of the property owner, and if they choose to do this and put it in place, it protects them from neighbors that may choose to want to shut them down for what they do in agriculture. It may protect them from some business that wants to come in and set up and close them down as an agriculture. So, it doesn't protect them, I mean, as far as the government's concerned, we're okay with that. What this is, all this ag protection thing is a protection for a farmer, rancher, somebody who has agriculture land that wants to keep it agriculture protection, and doesn't want their neighbors or some lawyer suing them out of being in agriculture. That's the purpose behind an agriculture protection area. It's not to protect you from the government, it's to protect you from people around you, businesses and folks that want to shut you down from doing those kind of things. That is the reason the agricultural protection zones were developed and put in place, and that's why we follow the rules that the legislature provides us as a commission, and we put it as an option for people in our county. If they choose to be in an agricultural protection zone, they can go through the process to be part of that zoning. And so, that's really just an explanation of why we have these protection zones, that we do understand that under the Constitution, you have a right to property and liberty and those things. But there are things that you, the government can't intercede. I can't stop your neighbor from suing you out of being in business. If they say, I don't like having cows on my property next to me, and they decide to file a lawsuit against you, there is nothing government gets to do to intercede there. That becomes a civil matter that goes in front of a court, and a court gets to decide, or a jury gets to decide. This ag protection zone gives an extra level of protection to that farmer, or that person with the agriculture area, to take to court to say, no, I have some protections that the government is saying through the legislature allows me to say, no, I have a right to have an agriculture protection area, and you can't shut me down just because you don't like the smell of my cows next door to you, or whatever it is you've got going on there. So, just as an explanation.
Okay. Thank you. I will accept a motion to open these-
I would make a motion to open the public hearing for the agricultural protection areas for the Larson Brigham City, Anderson Bothwell, and RE Farms Bothwell. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Perry to open the public hearings for the Larson from Brigham City, and the Anderson from Bothwell, and the RE Farms from Bothwell. Public hearings for these ag protection areas, and a second by Commissioner Vincent. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, those that would like to address the board, if you'd please come up here and sit, and make sure you pull that microphone close to yourself so we can hear, and also, if you'd let us know who you are, we'd appreciate that.
Okay, Deanna Hardy Brigham. The Boxheller Committee of Liberty again opposes agricultural protection areas because all farmers are protected under the Utah Constitution, Article One, Section One. This program is another bureaucratic program to control the people. This program is extorting money from the farmer to pay for the farmer's protection. This feels like a mafia-type program. The farmers who choose not to participate in this program, are they protected? This program is unconstitutional and needs to be nullified by this county commission, and the farmers restored their property, their money. Following quotes are a reminder of your responsibility and duty. This is a quote from George Washington when he was leaving the presidency. "It is important that the habits of thinking in a free country should inspire caution in elected officials, that they confine themselves within their respective constitutional spheres. The spirit of encroachment, the spirit which goes beyond what is constitutional, tends to create a real despotism." John Jay, author of the Fragileist Papers, an original justice on the Supreme Court, said, "Every member of the state ought diligently to read and study the Constitution of his country," and I'm going to include "and" your state, "and to teach the rising generation to be free. By knowing their rights, they will sooner perceive when their rights are violated, and be better prepared to defend and assert them." Thomas Jefferson, another founding father, he said, "What is necessary to make us happy and a prosperous people? A wise and frugal government that shall leave citizens free to regulate their own pursuits and industry and improvement, and not take from the mouth of the laborer the bread it was earned. This is the sum of good government." So this program that you're doing is not constitutional, and the majority of the people have no knowledge. They need to be taught in our understanding of our constitutions. And we need to not take, the government should not take advantage of them by putting in these programs and saying that it's needed, but it's really not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brandon East, RE Properties. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak. As stated, my name is Brandon East. I represent RE Properties. I'm a fourth-generation farmer, and while I carry on a proud legacy, my family has made hard decisions to help keep that legacy alive. My wife and I moved from Davis County to Boxheller County because suburban sprawl was making it incredibly difficult to continue farming where agriculture was no longer understood or valued. The pressures of development, rising land cost, and constant complaints made it clear that farms like ours were no longer welcome. We came to Boxheller County because this is a place that still respects farming, where agriculture is not just tolerated, but recognized as essential. At RE Properties, we operate a crop farm. Last year alone, we produced over 1.1 million pounds of onions, several thousand bushels of soft white wheat. We also grow corn silage and alfalfa hay, which we sell to multiple livestock producers, both in and out of the Bear River Valley. We are proud to contribute to the local food system and rural economy, but increasingly, even here, we are beginning to face many of the same challenges we left behind. Suburban sprawl, nuisance complaints, rising development pressure, new neighbors moving on to the borders of our farms who may enjoy the open views and quiet roads, but aren't familiar with realities of modern agriculture. The sound of a tractor working all hours of the night, the early mornings, the dust, the smell of manure, these are not disruptions, these are signs of a productive, working landscape. And yet, when these things are misunderstood or resented, they become legal threats to farms that have operated responsibly for generations. These are just a few reasons that ag protection areas are so important. They protect farmers from being penalized for simply doing their job. They help communities like ours maintain their agricultural base, not just in name, but in practice. Once farmland is gone, it doesn't come back. If we don't act now, we risk losing the very foundation of our food system. I urge you to support the creation and defense of agricultural protection areas. Let's ensure that farming remains part of this county's identity and future. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Brandon.
My name is Jonathan Gardner. I'm from Tremonton. I live in the area next to RE Farms. I have spoken with a lot of my neighbors and property owners in the area, and I strongly support the creation of the agricultural protection area for RE Farms. They are a valuable area, or a valuable asset to our neighborhood, and I appreciate all that they do. And talking with my neighbors as well, we also agree that we strongly support the creation of the APA in that area. Additionally, we strongly oppose any efforts of revoking any APAs in our area, namely, the Harvard Zone of the proposed Golden Spike Project area that is just right behind my property. That's currently of the plan of the Utah Authority. We believe that agricultural protection areas protect farmers from nuisance complaints and incompatible land uses, safeguard land from rezoning and eminent domain that threatens agriculture, encourages continued investment in farming operations, and preserves open space, rural character, and local food security in Boxheller County. The removal, or not granting of agricultural protection areas would expose farms to incompatible industrial development, undermine long-term agricultural use of productive lands, create conflicts between industrial, residential, and agricultural uses, and diminish real quality of life and community identity. We respectfully urge Boxheller County to approve the APA for RE Farms, and protect the surrounding agriculture protection areas to ensure future of agriculture in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Juliana Larson, Brigham City resident.
Okay, can you get that microphone really close to you?
My kids say I yell too much, so you-
Yeah, well, I've been-
You can actually pull that towards you there.
Yeah.
It should slide across-
I don't want you to miss much.
[laughing]
I've been in Brigham City now for over 50 years, married my husband over 55 years ago, and he and I have had several experiences with the outcomes when there are no things like ag protection to protect you from people. And I not just say that from planting, but I have had, and my husband and I have both had, over the 55 years, he's gone now, but we have been in ag, we have, part of our property is over a 100-year-old farm, and we have added to that, built on that, and managed that without any incident in the last 55-plus years. Him his whole life with his father here in Brigham City. But the problem comes, is people who do not understand, or claim to understand, what agriculture is all about, come in, look at what is there, and in today's world, all they see is green back and dollar. And there are a lot of us that don't want that. We want to continue to do what we have been doing. When my husband passed almost a year ago now, people said, what are you going to do with your animals? What are you going to do with your property? You going to sell it? What are you going to do? I said, after 55 years of marriage to my husband, what else would I do? I'd do what I do every day. And every day, he was here with me, helping me to do this. People don't understand, and we have been the, and I hate the word victim, but we have been the recipient of other people's opportunities to plant property that was agricultural, and turn it into something else. And they get the people that own it, that don't understand it, that don't want it anymore, and it becomes a nuisance right next door to the property that we are trying to do what we have done for over 100 years. And we try to explain that, but this opportunity for an ag protection will give us some clout, some teeth, to try to say, oh, no, 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 you knew we were here, you didn't like what we're doing, you can't force us to stop doing what we're doing. And I am the wife of a fourth-generation, son of a farmer. And people laugh at me in the store when I pick up my groceries, and they say, you need help with that? I said, no. Fourth-generation, son of a farmer's wife carries her own groceries. And we work to provide, not only for our own family, but to keep the land as it is intended to be. A lot of property, they're trying to transplant things onto, and the cities or the whoever says that it will do this, and this, and this, and when in reality, they don't know the property. And we have been the recipient of watching some of that turn into dry, arid, unwanted, unwelcome property that used to take runoff water away, and it was managed very nicely. But they have, they don't, because of their lack of understanding, and their lack of what we are trying to do. I don't think people really understand or appreciate the value of open ground, just where they can even drive by and see a piece of open ground that isn't concrete and asphalt. I mean, that gives us something to our quality of life. And we may not be the biggest operation, and I'm certainly here to tell you I know I'm not, but I'm trying to educate you to what it means to be one of those people who want to preserve what they have, and the way they've done it, and we've caused no problem over the 55 years, and nobody's bothered, well, I can't say they haven't bothered us, they've tried to bother us. And we have tried to find ways to stop that. But the ag protection on any of our ag property, anywhere here in the city, or anywhere around that we have, we need to have somebody that understands what we're trying to do, that will stop somebody from coming in and saying, oh, this needs to be here, and this needs to be this, and it needs to be done like this, when you know it's not going to work. And it will put you out of business, and out of what you have done forever.
Thank you. Our time's up.
Okay, and I'm just trying to leave a heritage for my children and my grandchildren. Great, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Vincent, and a second by Commissioner Perry to close the public hearings for the agricultural protection area. Next on the agenda-
For it.
Oh, we need to have to vote. My goodness. All in favor?
Aye.
All. Motion carries. I'm sorry, I was moving on. Item number nine, Attorney's Office Settlement Agreement and Release of Claims.
I'm going to ask that we put that after the closed session, so that we can talk about the details of that.
Okay.
And you can approve it after we come out of that.
We'll move that to item 17 and a half. After item 17. Okay, now we have resolutions. Scott, would you like to come up and address some of these issues that we talked about before the meeting? May I start by saying that as we have gotten involved in starting these ag protection areas, that there have been lots of things that we've found in the county. And right now, Scott's going to help us understand some of these issues, so that we can know how to proceed and move forward.
Yeah, so you have three here today, and I will just quickly touch on, so my department works very closely with the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is one of the bodies that reviews these and makes a recommendation to the County Commission. In the Planning Commission's review of these, and you all received their recommendation, you should have it there in your packet. The first one here, the Anderson, is the Resolution 2514, I believe. And that one, there were six parcels included in that application. Of those six parcels, five of the six were unzoned. One of the, meaning there's no zoning in that area. One of them is Zoned RR5, which is a rural residential five-acre zone. The RR5 zone does allow for agriculture as a use. Now, the reason I bring that up is in state code, there are, the Planning Commission is tasked, and the County Commission as well, is tasked at looking at a, what it says is analyzes and evaluates the proposal by applying the criteria contained in Section 1741305 of the state code. One of those criteria is whether or not the land is zoned for agricultural use. So, five of the six of these are not zoned, so not zoned for agricultural use is what the Planning Commission's take on that is. And one of them is Zoned RR5, which is a zone that does allow agriculture as a use. So the Planning Commission's recommendation on this one is to approve the one parcel, it's a 20.21-acre parcel, for agricultural protection, but the other five parcels would not reap the benefits of the agricultural protection area because they lack agricultural zoning. The Larson one is Zoned A20, which is an agricultural zone, thus, under that same criteria, would qualify for agricultural protection status. And then in the RE Farms, all of the parcels included in that application are in an unzoned area. And I know the applicant, the Brandon East, who came and spoke earlier, that has been a discussion that we have had. And so, being that none of those are in a zoned area, they're all unzoned, the discussion is that it may be required that you apply for agricultural zoning for your property, so that you can then qualify for an agricultural protection area. And these are some items that we discussed at our meeting regarding agricultural protection areas out of the fairgrounds as well. One of the concerns about adding unzoned areas to an agricultural protection area is that people could use agricultural protection areas as zoning protection. So, once it's added to an agricultural protection area, the zoning is essentially locked in place for as long as the ag protection area is in place, which is 20-plus years, so it's 20 years, and then automatically renews if it isn't reevaluated and all that. So there's the concern about it being used as zoning protection as opposed to agricultural protection. And that's why the Planning Commission and staff as well feels fairly strongly that the property should be in an agricultural zone prior to being added to an ag protection area.
So how long ago did these, were these applications made?
They're pretty strict timeline, so they have to go to, they go to the Planning Commission, and I think the Planning Commission has to respond within, respond to the County Commission within 45 days. Is that correct? I think it's 45 days. So, we, I believe these went to the Planning Commission at their June meeting, which is the third Thursday of June. And that was also, I believe, the third Thursday of June was the deadline for us to pass that information along to the County Commission. So I wrote the recommendation that the Planning Commission made that evening and sent it to you. So, and then from there, it comes to you in the meeting here. So it's, they probably, a rough estimate, two, two and a half months ago is when the application came in.
And they paid for that, right?
Correct.
So since that time, what were the ag zones when they made this application?
At that time, A20 was the only ag zone. There were some other zones that allow for agriculture as a use, rural residential zones, or multiple-use zones, but A20 was the only ag-specific zone.
So now you have the Ag Heritage Zone as well as an A20?
Correct. On, your meeting on July 9, an ag heritage zone was adopted. It's a zone that we've been working on for a bit, and it's basically a flex zone that allows, you know, agricultural landowners to preserve their agricultural use, but also gives them some flexibility in creating lots, whether, smaller lots, whether those are for family, friends, retirement supplementation, whatever it may be.
So, moving forward, with that in mind, then we need to, we need to change the zoning, is what you're telling me, from unzoned to an ag zone?
So the, yeah, staff and Planning Commission recommend, at least on the Anderson and on the RE Farms, those parcels that are unzoned, so the parcel in Anderson that is zoned could proceed, but those that are unzoned, both staff and Planning Commission recommend that those parcels be zoned prior to being approved for ag protection status.
So being that this has all kind of happened while the county's in motion, would it be feasible then, that if we ask them to make a reapplication and not charge them an additional fee, so that they could actually change that zoning, and then make the application back for this ag protection area? Is that a feasible request or not?
I think so. I think-
Just so they don't pay again. I mean, they've already paid for the application, and that's the thing. And we would like them to get zoned, but I don't see why we would charge again.
Yeah, so the zoning fee is separate than the agriculture protection area fee. They have not paid a zoning fee. They would pay that as when they enter into the zoning application. The ag protection area fee is a $200 fee to Marla's office, and that would be obviously up to you if you want to make some concessions there.
Can we, well, maybe I could ask the attorney. Can we just, could we table these as a committee and hold them until they can get the zoning done, and then bring them back? Without, now we wouldn't have to refile it. I don't know if there's a rule on timeline we have to fit.
There is a rule, I'm sorry, I'm buttoning in. It's 120 days.
From the time that they apply for it, we have to either approve it or deny it?
Correct. And we're pretty close to that 120 days at this point. We couldn't go one more commission meeting.
Okay.
How about we, how about we talk to an applicant? Brandon, why don't you come up and tell us what you think? Come on, I know you have an opinion.
Do you?
Why don't you just pass it?
I could tell you.
Well, I can't speak for Anderson.
No, just for RE Farms. So just give us an idea what-
For RE Farms, why don't you just do what you're going to do, and we have a family discussion that we need to make, and decide what we want to do. So, you know, if you're going to deny it, then get on with it, and we'll start fresh. I would rather see you deny my application and start over, not worried about the 200 bucks, so.
Yeah, well, we are.
Yeah, we're concerned about the money you've spent.
Yeah.
Get out your wallet.
Okay, thanks.
For RE Farms, why don't you just do what you're going to do? We, we have a family discussion that we need to make and decide what we want to do. So, you know, if you're going to deny it, then get on with it, and we'll start fresh. I, I would rather see you deny my application and start over, not worried about the 200 bucks.
Yeah, well, we are.
Yeah, we're concerned about the money you've spent.
Yeah.
Get out your wallet.
Okay, thanks.
Like I said, we need to talk as a family about zoning.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I can make a motion on one of them to start with, because we have to do them one at a time.
Yes.
So, I would make a motion that we approve, let's, let's start with item number B, Resolution 2515 for agricultural protection area in Brigham City area, unincorporated Boxer County Larson. I would make a motion that we approve that, that, that agricultural protection area, 2515.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve Resolution 25-15 for an agricultural protection area in the Brigham City area of unincorporated Boxer County. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And I, I think I would make a motion on Resolution 2514 to approve the agricultural protection area on the Anderson one for the property that is zoned agriculture, but deny it on the other portions that are not. But I'd also be willing to make a motion, maybe a separate motion, that we forego the fee if they need to come back to get those other five put under a protection zone. So, if we have to do a separate motion, we can do the motion as is, but that would be my motion, is that we approve Resolution 2415, the Bothell area, unincorporated Boxer County Anderson, for the portion that is zoned agriculture.
I would agree with that emotion, so I second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve the agricultural protection area for the parcel that is zoned agricultural and to deny the other parcels. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
So, on C, that one, until we can get the zoning, I think we need to deny that one. I'd make a motion, we deny that until we can get the zoning taken care of.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to deny the agricultural protection area in unincorporated area for RE Farms. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Did I make a follow-up motion?
Please, please do.
I'd make a motion on these two that we've denied at this point because of the process, that if they choose to come back and get rezoned within the next six months, get the property zoned and come back, we would not charge them another agricultural protection fee.
And I would agree with that as well.
And we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent that if the Anderson agricultural protection area for their parcels were denied, and for the RE Farms, if they come back within the next six months and make a, an application for an agricultural protection area, that those fees will not be charged, they will be credited to what they've already paid. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 11, Commissioners, 1204 Agreement, Terminating District One Mental Health Authority.
You want to talk about it, or you want me to, Steve?
Me too.
All right. Just, all this is, is, as you're aware, we've been going through this process with the Health Department, Mental Health Department. Years ago, for some reason, it probably shouldn't have been done, but there was a, a District One Mental Health Authority that was created between Boxer County, Cash and Rich Counties. And we now have to terminate that District One Mental Health Authority in order for us to go forward with the plan that we've been working on to create the Mental Health Authority that still falls upon us as commissioners in each of our independent areas and working with the Bear River Health Department. So, it'd be my motion that we terminate District One Mental Health Authority under Agreement 2561.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve Agreement 2561, Terminating District One Mental Health Authority. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Item number 12, Community Development.
All right. So, this is a zoning map amendment request. This is in, this property was actually included in the RE Farms ag protection area request. So, this came to, if you've had a chance to read your staff report, hopefully that clarifies. This one has been kind of interesting. Anyway, it went to the Planning Commission like a year ago. And the request was to go from unzoned to RR1, which is a rural residential one acre And the, at the time, the Planning Commission reviewed it, they held their public hearing. There was some comment at the public hearing, and, and it was in opposition to the request. And the, despite that opposition to the request, what the public said at that was that they didn't want to see subdivisions develop, as that they would have an impact on their agricultural operations. Commissioners discussed that the zone amendment would actually make the land more restrictive than what is currently unzoned. So, and, and that is correct. And the Planning Commissioners, based on that, forwarded a recommendation of approval to you, the County Commission. So, while the Planning Commission didn't necessarily, I guess I shouldn't speak for them specifically, as this wasn't in your staff report, but the area is an agricultural area. There is some rural residential development in that area, generally along the frontages. And the interior of the majority of the, of the land in that area is all agricultural. So, I think the Planning Commission, they viewed it as, this is unzoned, meaning that it could be developed at a half acre density. What is being requested is a one acre density, rural residential one acre. And then also, the unzoned allows for commercial, allows for industrial, allows for.
And he wanted to keep one, he wanted to keep part of it out for industrial, right?
Correct. So, at the Planning Commission level, public hearing was held, recommendation of approval was made for it to be changed from unzoned to rural residential one acre. Between the Planning Commission meeting and this meeting, the County Commission meeting, the applicant has requested that one acre be excluded from that. If you have your map there in your, in your thing, he's requesting that one acre in this area be excluded and be, remain unzoned. And that's because his profession is plumbing, he would like to locate, he, he has a building on that piece of land that is just a, like a shop, I guess you could call it. But it technically is not, I, I don't know if he's operating his plumbing operations out of it yet. If he is, then he would be doing so without the proper permits in place. But he would like to exclude that one acre from the zone change so that he can locate his plumbing business on that one acre piece, and then the rest of the property would be zoned rural residential one acre. So, essentially, at this level, you guys have three choices, I guess you could say. One is approve the rezone as it was originally applied for and was recommended by the Planning Commission. You have the ability to modify the request or modify the recommendation from the Planning Commission, which would be to approve the rezone less that one acre, and that would stay unzoned and the rest of the property would move into the RR1. Or the third option would be to kick it back to the Planning Commission and have them look at it and decide if they want to exclude that piece as requested by the applicant.
Any more questions? Ideas?
So, our staff has prepared two ordinances. One ordinance is, includes all of the property as was originally applied for. The other ordinance includes the property less that one acre where the proposed shop would be.
So, the ordinance was applied for, the first one was for RR, rural residential, right?
Rural residential one, correct.
And so, the second request was for rural residential with one acre being left out?
No, rural res, just, just from one, one acre of that being excluded from the overall rezone.
Right.
Correct.
For his plumbing, whatever.
Correct.
Okay. And so, what, so Scott, remind me, what did, so what, what was the Planning Commission's feeling on this?
Their feeling essentially was that a step to RR1, while it may not be like ideal, being in an agricultural area, it is better than unzoned. And so, that is, the, the recommendation of approval comes from that perspective of, sure, maybe we would love to have this zoned as agriculture, but the applicant's requesting rural residential one acre, which is a better zone for that area than unzoned. And so, they figure, step in the right direction, we recommend approval.
And that's, and that's what the Planning Commission is recommending?
Correct. Their recommendation was based on the whole parcel being, being RR1. It was between that recommendation and this meeting that the, that the applicant requested that that one acre parcel where the shop is be excluded from the zone.
Having that in mind, I'd make a motion that we send it back to the Planning Commission to get that fixed before it is brought to us and have us, I'd rather than us deal with it here, I'd rather have the Planning Commission deal with it. That'd be my motion. Send it back to the Planning Commission and deal with the entire package so it's clean, brought back to us clean.
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to send ordinance number 630 zoning map amendment in entry mountain area from unzoned to RR1 back to the Planning Commission to rework through that and then make recommendation to a future meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Just one more question.
Yeah.
About the unzone, you mentioned, it's always been a question for me in my mind, why, when it's unzoned, instead of not being able to do anything until you zone it, or, but all these other things, it seems like you can do anything you want. It's just, I just don't understand that. What are we going to do about that?
You're saying how it's been, unzoned has been treated as anything is allowed because it's unzoned versus why is it not the opposite of nothing is allowed until you?
Until you go through the process.
Yeah. I, I think that's something that, I mean, we would have to, I would probably want to sit down with the Attorney's Office and figure out if that were a change that the County Commission wanted to implement, how we would go about implementing that. I imagine it's some text that we would need to add to our land use code to clarify that and then start handling it from that way forward. So.
I think we need to do something.
If that's something you want to direct us to do.
Yeah, please do.
More than happy to do it.
Please get started on it and make some recommendations to us if you would.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Okay. Item 13, Road Department gravel lease agreement 25-56. Darren.
How are you today?
Good.
Good. Um, I don't know.
Who are you?
Darren McFarlane, Road Department. I don't know if you guys know, maybe you do. Every year, we rotate three, a three-year rotation, and we go out west to Yoast or Grouse Creek or Park Valley, and we rebuild gravel roads. We average four to eight weeks, depending on the project, and we rely heavily on landowners out there that lease us their property to make our, our road base gravel or pit run that we use to do this. This is one of those. Our rotation puts us to Yoast this year. This pit is along the NAF road. That's the road we'll be rebuilding and working on this year. And so, I have in front of you guys is a lease agreement for Jerry Zollinger, the county's done business with this gentleman in the past. It's been a great relationship. This would just kind of renew that contract, or agreement, I should say.
So, with that agreement, I mean, you've got what, how much you're going to use and how much you're going to pay and all of that?
Yeah, so we pay everybody the same price. We pay everybody $1 a ton, and we pay for it as we use it. We found that to be a little better than to pay after we've crushed it. We've had some disappear in the past, so. As we haul it, our guys keep good track, and then we pay the landowner for the amount we haul. That, on an average, it's around 30,000 ton a year that we try to, try to haul and place and grade.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioners?
I'll make a motion that we approve gravel lease agreement number 25-56 with Jerry Zollinger as presented.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to approve gravel lease agreement 25-56 with Jerry Zollinger. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we come to the public comment period. No action will be taken at this time. Those wishing to make a public comment shall sign the comment roll and will be responsible for following the rules outlined in the County Commission Rules and Procedures. Speakers will have one, three-minute opportunity to speak. Regardless of the number of items they wish to address, speakers shall address their comments to the County Commission only. This is a time to be heard. There will not be back-and-forth dialogue with Commissioners. Speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the county clerk. The county clerk will make the information available to the County Commission. We have one today is Deanna Hardy.
Deanna Hardy Brigham. The Boxer County Committee of Liberty highly recommends the Saints book to read about the pioneers. Our hearts go out to the pioneers for all of the persecution they went through. Being driven from city to city and from state to state, and literally fleeing from the United States of America, presidents and governors would not help the pioneers, but our heavenly Father helped them and strengthened them for their journey to the Utah Territory. The pioneers helped make Utah blossom as it rose. Our committee was sad to see the state and local governments and the schools remove the state flag to put up the new state flag, which costs the taxpayers over a half a million dollars for this new state flag. Our representatives are not being very wise with our tax dollars. The changing of the state flags is happening in other states as well. The former state flag showed the year the pioneers entered the Territory, 1847. It showed the year Utah was made a state, 1896. It showed the Bs and the word industry. The people were hardworking and very industrious. The American flags were removed, along with our nation's bird, the eagle. The state flower was removed, the seagull lilies, which helped the pioneers from starving to death. The pioneers ate the bulbs of the flowers. Our committee has already petitioned this commission earlier this year to restore the former state flag with all our history on it. And this commission indicated that you could possibly bring it in, bring in another poll to display the former historical state flag, but as of this date, it still has not been displayed. The Boxer County Committee of Liberty again petitions this commission to display the historical former state flag, and we encourage all citizens to fly the former flag so that our children, grandchildren, future generations, and all will remember our state history, instead of being complicit in helping to erase our state history. Thank you. And I hope this will show on the video, because last time I showed these, there was no, there was no video. You could hear it, but you could not see it. So, I hope the people see this today. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only one that we have signed up for public comment.
You've got to get warrant register now.
So, now we are ready for the warrant register.
That's it. Personnel, closed session personnel.
Okay. Well, we got another thing on closed session we got to go into, so. Do you have the warrant register, though?
I do.
Okay. Okay, well, I will accept the motion.
We'll make a motion to go into closed session to deal with personnel issue as well as a legal matter.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to go into closed session to deal with legal matter and personnel issue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Starts at nine o'clock. You just need to be in front of the clock. You ready?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve the settlement agreement and release of claims, Prisby versus Box Elder County as presented by Stephen Hatfield.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to approve the settlement agreement and release of claims, Prisby versus Box Elder County. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And we'll take care of the warrant register as presented. Do we need to make a motion on that then, or not? Or we, okay, just need to take care of the signatures, all right? Okay. Take care of that. We'll make one final motion.
We have, except one final motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to adjourn our meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.
I have a question, that RE Farms, none of their neighbors are complaining about the ag name change? So, what, like a $200 reward? That they play for the application? If none of the neighbors are complaining, and I heard that that $200 was a postage to my people?
Right.
So, what is that?
Well, that's what I said, we're not gonna bill them if they do it again. What it, what it is.
It's not like they would pay $100.
Right.
Okay, so what is that, $100 recovered?
To send, send notices to all their neighbors that.
They said none of the neighbors are complaining.
At this point, right. Except, we did get a letter from one person that came back. Right.
That's what, 78 cents?
But you have to notify everybody around them if they want to go this route. The law says we have to tell them all.
But what's happening there is the government's causing this fear among the people, so the people are, the many people went to the government and asking protection, and they don't need to do this, they're already protected. The people come out and complain against the farmer, they have no standing, because the farmer was there first.
Except for, did you hear what Mrs. Larson told you?
I can hear you very well.
And what she explained to us is that she's been in that farm for 55 years?
Yes.
And that her neighbors keep encroaching on her and keep complaining and keep causing problems for her, and that's why she wants that protection zone, is because she's tired of all of her neighbors continually trying to shut her operation down.
But what?